Yeah, I think we got both wrong.
Okay. Here. Let's call the, uh, meeting to order, please, for October sixth, twenty twenty-five. And could I get a roll call?
Mayor Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
And Councilmember Bullock.
Here.
I have Cora.
Thank you. Please rise if you're able to for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda, is there any additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda? And I have one addition. Under new business. And we can fit that in. Under. Let's see, let's. Item. A then. New business item K, and that would be Michael Wilson's performance evaluation from our September twenty-fourth special meeting minute. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries, thank you. The consent agenda, the consent agenda contains the following items for approval. The September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. The September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. The September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. The September twenty-fifth special meeting minutes. And the placement of claims and listing of bills, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Community concerns, do we have anyone signed in for community concerns, Stephanie?
No, we do not.
Okay, all right. We'll move on then to our reports from department heads. And, uh, first up would be Public Works Director. Tuck in on it, right at the end.
Right away.
Well, it's a busy night for you, I'm sure.
Yeah, trying to do ticket sales and pitch everything else, but.
We're two hats at once today.
Yep.
Well, go ahead, Mike.
Um. You guys have copied the report, you have any questions on that at all, anything in there that's?
That's all.
Other than that, uh, new, uh, new garbage trucks in, working well. Uh, there's a couple of ground ones in there that's, uh, a couple of little hydraulic leaks that some hoses aren't quite tight, but kind of have that in time to time. That's working well, um. Do a little bit worse building drawn up or full store in the building, I guess, I'm gonna call it that, I don't know if you guys have been, I'll follow up and see.
It almost looks like a building now when you're coming down twenty-three into Pipestone, so you can tell.
Yep, W two boys are working on that, doing a good job, it's, that's gonna be really nice, looking forward to, to getting into that. Um, other than that, um, just want to touch base on the ash trees, I don't know if you brought that up yesterday.
No, I have not, so go ahead.
We are going to try and be a little bit more proactive as far as Emerald Ash Board and taking down some of the ash trees around town on the boulevards and in the parks. Um, hate to do it, but it's kind of one of them things that's, it's not if, but when it's, uh, when it gets here, they're gonna have to go, so. People in the community are wondering what we're doing, whether we're taking them out, that's what we're up to. Um, probably, you know, down in the pool area, I know I've got, there's probably eight or ten of them marked down there, nine that, you know, that's gonna be on top of the, of the list, but. You know, there's a lot of them around town, there's a lot of them in our, in our parks and in the community, so just kind of giving the community the heads up on that, on what we're up to is. Not just out taking trees down for fun.
Yeah.
I'd like to see them stay, but. A lot of them, like we talked in our meeting the other day, they're, they're old, groom and son of them are, it's time for them to go anyway, but before that ash board gets here and makes a mess, we're trying to get it out of the game, so.
Well, I'm no expert, but I would say it is here, because I've noticed a few ash trees that have been just slowly dying limb by limb, and, uh.
It's, it's a possibility, I haven't, you know, I haven't seen anything official yet, but it's, it wouldn't surprise me if it's here, it's not too far away.
So your plan is if you take down an old growth tree, um, you'll be replacing that with a, uh.
I'd like to.
Different type of tree.
Try, you know, you know, as, as the budget allows, I think we put forty-five hundred or five thousand dollars away. Trees are hundred fifty, two hundred bucks a piece, so. I'd like to do something with that, and I know Justin has been working, uh, on trying to get a, is it, ass, right, Justin, as far as, you know, helping with Emerald Ash Boarding, tree replacement and, and take down stuff, so if, if. If that goes through, that would be fantastic, that would help a lot, then we could plant a lot of trees, and it's not, you, it's certain areas of the town and you can't just. Plant them in the whole town, I know, like, I mean, Brown, Dish and Scott, you guys are out, but the majority of the town is in that, uh. In that grant area, that map, so.
Good, good goal to have.
That would be, that'd be great, I haven't heard the hands of Lee, but I'm worried about us. So. But, yeah, other than that, it's kind of what we're up to, so.
Well, put on your fire chief hat for a minute and tell us what's going on this week.
Um, well, well, not a whole lot, well, we should have a whole lot this week, but it, it's a lot of homecoming, so we're postponing some of our activities. Um, fire drills, I suppose to say, are next week, um. We're gonna do, uh, kindergarten stuff with the, with the fire trucks and some of the guys will go out, they do coloring books and things like that. Um, we do have an open house this coming Sunday, um, ten to one at the fire hall, we're having hot dogs and, and jaws demos, um, the area will be up. We got, uh, like they're doing some stove fire, things like that. They're bringing a trailer in from Slaton that has a kind of a fake, fake fire in the windows so kids can spray with the garden hose and pretend they're firemen, I guess it's supposed to be really neat, I haven't seen it yet, so. But yeah, other than that, we're doing ticket sales tonight and tomorrow night, and if we get it done, it'll be done, if not, it'll be Wednesday night, but, you know, other than that, that's kind of what we've got up to there.
Well, good luck on all that.
Yeah, nothing going on.
The weather cooled down a little bit, so.
The bugs are gone, so.
Yeah, oh, that's great, that's, that's why they're right there.
The last two weeks have been kind of miserable, they say my, the spray we use kills them, but we gotta spray when they're out, but. I don't know, it's been kind of unbearable with.
Yeah. Now that you mention that, how much longer do you think you'll be spraying on?
Oh, if it stays cool like to, you know, like it is tonight, we probably won't spray this week, cause, you know, there's, there's no bugs out, we have to, to spray when the bugs are out, but, so if it stays cool, we may be done, if it warms back up, we may go another time or two if we need to.
Okay.
Um, and the work site, um, don't, uh, don't start raking your leaves to the gunners just yet, I know they're starting to fall. It's close, but we'll, uh, we'll, we'll pulse when we're going out and vacuum leaves up, I've seen a few piles in the gunners, hey, they do now, plugs catch basins and make some mess if we do get some rain, so.
Good idea, okay, all right.
All right.
Well, thank you, Mike, appreciate it, give up all the good work.
Thank you, see you later.
Thanks, Mike.
Library Director, Jody, you're up.
It's tall. All right, um, thank you, uh, just wanted to let you know our summer reading program wound down in August, and tomorrow, our Pipestone Area Friends of the Library will be drawing for, uh, we had eighty-two completed youth reading logs turned in to us. So they're going to be drawing for three bowling and pizza parties out of those, so listen and see if you're a winner there. Um, and then tomorrow night, October seventh, at six P M., we have our final program in our community connections through artistic expression series that we did all summer. And Mark Todi will share his artistic journey as a photographer, graphic designer, and the arts administrator at the Pipestone Performing Arts Center. And if you didn't have the chance to go to the season opener on Saturday, I highly encourage you to at least hit, I think, uh, the same performer's doing a Christmas one.
Yeah, December nineteenth.
Yes.
Michael Buble.
So that's gonna be fantastic, but, um, yeah, so our arts is really important in our community, whether it is through the library or Performing Arts Center, and we receive grants, um, so, it was brought to us tomorrow through the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. Let's call out and see all the great big smart jobs. And then on Tuesday, October fourteenth, we'll host an accordion bookmaking workshop with printmaker Phyllis, I think, you say Jones is how you say her last name. Uh, it starts at five thirty P M. and runs about two and a half hours long and all supplies are provided. And then we'll be hitting our community read right now, you can pick up our community read book, which is Booth Girl, it is written by author Cam Havela, she's a Minnesota author, she, um, it's kind of her memoir, kind of her mom's story, a lot of history about the, um. The Booth Hospital and the unwanted pregnancies of moms and babies and kind of what happened to them back in the day. And so she'll be coming on, uh, November first at two P M. And, uh, we're having an author dis, or a book discussion on the twenty-first at six P M. for our community read book discussion, so welcome to join us there. And then, um. We're also working on a November workshop to finish on our calendar year, that's gonna be kind of a crafty holiday, uh, retreat over two days, but we'll keep you informed, so stay tuned at www.materslibrary.com.
Thank you, Jody.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a lot going on at the library, and if you haven't been there, it's a great place to check out, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Liquor store manager, I don't see him. One of your law enforcement, not here, so we're up to Pete, Recreation Director.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay, good evening.
Brought you a report and, uh, over our recent quarterly totals, and if you got any questions on that, feel free to speak up if you want. Um, also, um, I forgot to give you this, excuse me, um, I'll give you. Say. I'll have to talk, thank you, but yeah. Um, things, some things are going on, the rec and everything, uh, one of those is, I just handed you off a, uh, picture, we had a mural, uh, drawn by Mackenzie Jansen, who worked for us at the rec center, she's right now going to college at the U of M. But she did this and she undertook that project, and I thought maybe you might want to see that, so something nice and refreshing at the rec center, deploy area, so she did an outstanding job and very creative, and we're getting a lot of good compliments on that, so.
Oh, great, yeah, ties in with our Community Improvement Commission, and, uh, we've been talking about putting murals out, and we actually just got permission to, uh, have a mural painted on the, uh, Highway thirty underpass at the railroad crossing. And so on the inside, where you could see it when you're walking on the sidewalk, and then also the outside's available too. So we're gonna be contacting the school and, uh, seeing if, uh, they're interested in that, and now we're trying to figure out how to get some artists together, so I'm glad you got a head start on us there, Pete, that's great.
She offered to do it, and then she's very creative, and she did an excellent job, so I think it's a nice improvement to the direction in the pool area. Um. We've ordered some new sand play equipment for the, uh, outdoor aquatic facility, replace some of the older stuff that's there, and also some of the older stuff that's there, we're gonna take it off, sandblast, repaint it, and use it in the sand play area, so that's coming.
Okay. That plywood stuff?
No, that'll be, um. It'll be a wood, a plate table.
Okay.
So that'd be the one, we're redoing one, um, the boys at Public Works said they could redo the one, the other one's pretty shot, so we're taking that one out, putting a new one in, adding a sand play table, that's a little higher up in the air, and then, um, redoing the, uh, the writing. Structures over there.
Okay, yeah. Popular area for the little guys.
Very good, yes. Volleyball, tennis, and football just got wrapped up, uh, here in the last two weeks for some of our ball sports, we still got gymnastics going on yet, and, uh, we'll start basketball next week at the rec center. We're gonna start up Little Tikes again, um, that's a program that we run once a week on Wednesdays for one dollar for people to come in, and we set up a bouncy house and play things for kids and daycares and, um, people that are home with their kids, and they can come in and play at the rec for an hour and a half to two hours on a Wednesday, so we'll start that on, in November. And, uh, our winter hours are gonna start in November at the rec center, so starting November third, we'll be open till nine o'clock at night, and then on the weekends, we'll be nine to five on Saturday and one to five on Sundays for staffed hours, that's Thursday, November the third. And, uh, along with that, uh, apply for a couple of grants to the United Way for summertime fun and after-school program, and for our rec program, so I'm, we'll find out here in December about those.
Is your after-school program going on now?
Yes. Yep.
So this would be for next year's.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've applied for it before, we've gotten it each year, it all depends on which funds they have. It's a great way, now, United Way has been a great supporter of the rec program and after-school and summertime fun.
Yes, great, uh, collaboration between the city and the school district and.
And there's also other organizations too who have helped out, right, like Kiwanis and other businesses in town too, so.
Great. Okay. Any questions for Pete?
Yeah, so, well, thank you, Pete.
Appreciate it. Engineering is up, and the industrial road in improvement project, pay request number one, and that would be a final, uh, payment, and, uh, I don't see Travis on Zoom, is he available, or?
He's on Zoom.
I'm here.
Oh, you're, oh, there you are, okay, hi Travis, yeah, do you have a presentation for us on the, uh, industrial road improvement project?
Yeah, so mush construction has finished the work as planned, uh, the pay app number one is a final, because they've submitted all the closeout paperwork. Uh, all work is done, and, uh, we are recommending payment in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, yeah, I was out there, uh, today, this afternoon, and, uh, it, it's such a huge improvement, yeah, that was a long, drawn-out project, um, it was way overdue, so it's nice to have it done.
Indeed. Yep, it looks good.
So I would entertain a motion then for the, uh, pay request.
I'll make a motion to provide the pay request for the industrial road improvements.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded, is there any questions, discussion? And Travis, is there any holdback on that for, uh, warranty work or anything, or is this a one-time bill?
This is a one-time bill, we're releasing retainage because there was, uh, no additional items to complete, uh, there is a two-year warranty on the project that will begin at, uh, acceptance of the pay request.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for explaining that, how that works. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. All right, we'll go on to old business, consider resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-four and twenty twenty-five sixty-five regarding the detachment of city property to Gray Township. And as a discussion during, uh, previous council meetings, two petitions for detachment of city property to Gray Township has been filed with the municipal boundary adjustment unit, and that's in the state of Minnesota, the council will need to review each petition and decide whether to submit a resolution supporting or opposing the detachment. If both the city and Gray Township agree on the same decision, the chief administrative law judge will carry out that decision. However, if the decision is split, it will require both parties to participate in a mediation session to determine a decision. So let's go through resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-four, that's regarding petition for detachment of land from the city of Pipestone to Gray Township. And the, uh, municipal boundary adjustment unit docket number D six seven seven was filed by Thomas J. Nelson, who is requesting the detachment of approximately twenty-three point seven five acres of agricultural land from city property. City staff has reviewed the property, and with the majority of the property being located within the floodplain and undevelopable, staff has recommended the council approve the resolution, supporting the request for detachment, and authorize the city attorney and city clerk to carry out the intent of the resolution. So I'd entertain a motion on resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-four.
So moved.
I would move that we, uh, approve the detachment, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, according to staff recommendation.
Seconded.
So it's been moved and seconded, any questions on that? And this would be for the property that's just north of Highway twenty-three and seventy-five intersection on the north side of town.
In the floodplain, correct.
Yes, yeah, okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five, now, this is the same type of resolution, and this was the, uh, uh, boundary adjustment unit docket D six seven eight, also filed by Thomas J. Nelson and David R. Nelson, who are requesting the detachment of approximately a hundred and five acres. So it'd be a hundred and five point seven four acres of agricultural land from the city property, and David L. Mullenbrook and Karen Mullenbrook, as trustees of the David L. Mullenbrook and Karen Mullenbrook Living Trust, are requesting the detachment of approximately eleven point three one acres of agricultural land from city property. City staff have reviewed the property, and although the portion of the property is located within the floodplain, property is still able to be developed, and in the future may be needed for commercial expansion of the city. Therefore, staff are re, recommending the council approve the resolution, opposing the request for detachment, and authorizing the city attorney and city clerk to carry out the intent of that resolution. So I'd entertain a motion at this time.
And this land is.
This land would be located, uh, uh, are you familiar with the land that used to be the drive-in theater?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be about the eleven acres, I believe, and then the rest of it is in the, uh, northeast portion of the industrial park.
Behind the trailer park.
Yeah, we're to locate. That must be this.
Yeah.
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 And there's much easier to hear than we were talking about.
Okay.
And I have included the floodplain map, that these guys were all to be doing.
I will make the motion to oppose, uh, detachment.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to oppose the detachment of this property, um, with the city of Pipestone and Gray Township. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. And so that process will continue then, since there is, uh, opposition. Consideration for the four-way stop sign at the intersection of Third Avenue Northwest and Second Street Northwest, and we talked about this subject at our last meeting and was looking for further information, I know I talked to Mike today, and, uh, he was waiting for information from, uh, Nick, and that's the county engineer. Because that is a county-state aid roadway through that intersection, one thing I did learn was that that was a four-way stop in two, up until two thousand and nine, a, and then it was taken out when they redid that roadway, so, um, the. Problem is still there, the buildings are too close to the intersection really to see from all directions when you're approaching that intersection, but I would recommend that we table this at this time and wait for further information from our county engineer, as well as the, uh, city engineer, Travis was gonna come up with some recommendations for us. And, uh, we'll move ahead on this at a future meeting, so I would move that we table this until our next regularly scheduled meeting in October. Moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. New business, requests for council action, the Pipestone Area School District is planning to host a homecoming day parade on Friday, October tenth, from approximately one P M. to two fifteen P M. The parade will have the high school marching band leading the parade, and includes floats from community businesses, school clubs, and school classes. The parade route will begin at the school and travel down Second Street going east to the city fire hall, then turn south one block, and then west again, traveling down Main Street, past all of the downtown businesses. The route will then turn north on Eighth Avenue from one block, or for one block, and turn back west on the Second Avenue, going west to return back to the school. Uh, the floats are also planning to hand out, uh, candy during the parade, so we'd encourage the public to, uh, get out on the sidewalk and, uh, see that parade up close. Uh, the school district is requesting the city waive the twenty-five dollar parade permit fee, and also receive assistance from the Public Works Department in closing off the city streets during the time of the parade. The school district is also working with Pipestone County to coordinate this event. Uh, Pipestone, or Public Works Director Mike Blumendall has stated that his staff is able to assist with the event request, so. I'd entertain a motion for, uh, approval of the waiving of the, uh, parade permit fee, and to approve that permit.
So moved.
Moved and. Moved and seconded, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Homecoming week, that's also going on this week, so busy week. Parade permit, so this would be the Pipestone Area School District is requesting the one-day parade permit, so we did cover that then with that motion, so we can move past that. Resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-two, this resolution is to receive a feasible report from engineer Winter for the proposed twenty twenty-six street utility improvement project on Second Avenue Southwest between State Highway thirty and Tenth Street Southwest. And schedule a public hearing on the proposed improvement assessment for November third, twenty twenty-five, in the council chambers of the city hall at approximately six thirty P M. And, uh, engineer Travis Winter will present the feasibility report. At that time.
Travis, are you?
Are you still there, Travis?
Yep.
Okay, did you have a feasibility report for the, that street project?
Yes, it's included in council packet, um, basically it includes various street utility improvements, sewer, water, storm sewer, uh, as well as sidewalk, street, curb and gutter. Uh, total estimated cost for the three blocks is approximately two point two million dollars. Um, we have an assessment role included, and, um, this will all be presented at the public hearing in November.
Okay, a, and this was something that we discussed with our utility commission, and, uh, we had recommendations from staff that there was infrastructure that needed to be replaced in those areas, and also the street itself is in pretty rough shape in a couple of those areas too, so. Um, we'll see how it plays out, it's the beginning of the process, and, uh, we'll go from there, on how it goes. Okay, so I'd need a motion to approve Travis to continue to work with the feasibility.
The move, we, uh, we have, uh.
The hearing.
The hearing.
I should say.
For the assessment on November third.
The second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three, and this resolution comes as a request from Pipestone County, is proposing to do roadwork on county-state aid Highway thirty, which is the road directly north of the city water treatment plant, going east and west from Highway seventy-five to Indian Lakes. Approving the resolution will allow for the work to be done within the city limit, and what they're actually gonna do, that is a, uh, blacktop road, and they're gonna seal coat it. So i- it's good for the longevity of the roadway, so I'd entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. The law enforcement service agreement, Pipestone County has agreed to the new law enforcement and enforcement services agreement at the rate of two hundred and forty dollars per capita, or one billion eleven thousand six hundred dollars for the year of twenty twenty-six. The motions needed to accept and enter this agreement with Pipestone County, and this was something that we had negotiated at, uh, special meetings, uh, myself and Burdine met with, uh, county commissioners and, uh, county administration, and, uh, Stephanie was also there with Deb Nelson, and, uh. We came to a, a reasonable agreement that I think everybody was satisfied with, and, uh, it locks things in, we've talked about it at other meetings. And, uh, it locks things in, we've talked about it at other meetings. And so this would be our approval of that, uh, contract, which the county has already approved and signed.
I move we, uh, accept this agreement with law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Hord Farms West Dust Control Plan and a new dust control plan has been submitted by Hord Farms West for their feed mill located in Pipestone. Hord Farms has received a zoning permit that required them to have a dust control plan for their receiving pit. Recently, they have implemented new equipment for safety measures and reduced the amount of dust and is requesting the approval of their new dust control plan. And, uh.
I think Justin might have some more information on that.
Okay, good, cuz I had a few questions on that, Justin. So when, when that permit was issued, um, they were required, one of the requirements from the, uh, commission was that they have a mitigation plan for dust control. And they were putting down the, uh, soybean oil, whatever that's called, uh, on the gravelled area. It seemed to work real well. So now do they have another plan in place or what do they want to change?
The original, um, variance from February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, I'll just read it to you.
Yeah.
Motion was made by Colonel and seconded by Depp, as the United Aspeni carry to recommend the council approve the variance request from Hord Farms with the condition that the owners submit to the city council on an annual basis, a dust control plan for the city council review. The dust control plan shall include a measure for spraying the area of the structure for dust control and to the extent possible, closing the doors on the enclosed structures. Um, the reason this came up is they put in some baffles on the inside and then they put in a great big back system that takes all the dust out of the loading pit. So what they're trying to circumvent now is having to open and close the door constantly. This is just hard on our own equipment, they're saying. With that new back and everything, you said it should be less of dust and the doors closed.
Okay. So this is a yearly plan.
Yeah.
And this is an improvement to their plan.
Yeah.
And, uh, if it turns out that it isn't working as well, we can review it again in a year. Yeah, so.
He's got a, dude. And G C A was out there and checked it out too, making packs in great tubes.
Okay, yeah. I know they put in a lot of new equipment and it's top notch, so, yeah, good, good to hear. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve their, uh, request for dust control plan.
I'll, uh, make that motion to approve their plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Justin, for explaining that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Consider classification adjustment for the director of community development. And again, at the last regular scheduled meeting, it was decided to change Justin Sawyer's job title to adding additional zoning duties to his job description. With these changes, Sawyer's new job description was sent to David Brown of Associates and reclassified. The new classification came in at a pay grade eighteen, which is up one pay grade from where the E D A director position was classified. Administration is requesting the council move Sawyer to pay grade eighteen, step one. September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and, uh, Justin was given the new title of director of community development. And, uh, that coincides with the resignation of Solomon Derby, which was zoning and also, um, uh, building inspecting. And, uh, now with moving zoning duties to the E D A director, which is now our, uh, director of community development, it, uh, makes sense to combine those positions and, uh, work a little bit more efficiently and still provide the same services that the public has to have, so. I'd entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Consider contract with the local assessor Eric Groquist. I should, I should ask. Groquist?
Groquist.
Groquist. And Eric is a senior accredited Minnesota assessor. Has served at the city's local assessor for the past several years. Included in the council's meeting package is a copy of the proposed contract. Total cost of the contract is seventy-nine thousand dollars, which is an increase of two thousand dollars over the past two years. Contract also includes a two hundred dollar per day fee if the assessor is required to attend court testimony on behalf of the city. And, uh, we've worked with Eric and his staff for several years. They do a great job. In fact, Eric is a mayor himself in his community where he lives. And so he understands the process very well. And, uh, I'd recommend that we, uh, approve the contract that's a minimal increase for the next two years.
I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Authorize assistant city administrator, city clerk temporary signing authority at First Bank and Trust. Due to the city administrator being on a leave of absence, the assistant city administrator, city clerk needs to receive authorization from the city council to sign checks and have authority to manage the city's investment accounts while the city administrator is out for a temporary period that is estimated to be until approximately January first, twenty twenty-six. So I'd entertain a motion for approval.
I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. The twenty twenty-six budget update, following the approval of the preliminary levy, was identified that the preliminary levy percentage increase that was approved on September twenty-fifth was inadvertently miscalculated. Uh, the dollar amount reported remains correct at an increase of hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. However, the correct percentage increase should have read five point four percent rather than five point two percent. So this is for information only, we just want to make that clear. Uh, that was a clerical error and, uh, um, we want to be as clear as we can when it comes to budgeting processes. Okay. Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation, so I have proclamation to read here. And we're all aware that this is, uh, fire prevention week from last meeting's proclamation. So we're moving ahead here to, uh, then later this month. Whereas the city of Pipestone recognizes the occupation of indigenous homelands for the building of our city and those indigenous nations have lived upon this land since time immoral and values the progress of our society accomplished through and by American Indian thought, through culture and technology. And whereas the city of Pipestone understands the importance of closing the equity gap between and by government entities, organizations and other public institutions and to encourage change in policies and practices to better reflect the capabilities of native people of the land and recognize their indigenous roots, history and contributions. And whereas the city of Pipestone supports education, which provides for an accurate historical record of the discovery of the United States of America. And whereas the city of Pipestone has a strong history throughout the years of supporting the native people of the land and community and its citizens. Advancements in our current society. And whereas the city of Pipestone shall continue its efforts to promote the well-being and growth of the local native people of the land and community and indigenous communities. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people on this land and to celebrate the thriving culture and value indigenous nations add to our city. Therefore, I Dan Delaney do hereby proclaim October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Pipestone, Minnesota. And I would encourage other businesses, organizations and public entities to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day as well. Thank you. Closing comments, we have any closing comments?
Have to K you. You're having.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, thanks for reminding me. We added K for new business and that is Michael Wilson's, um, performance evaluation that we did at closed session on September twenty-fourth, twenty-five, twenty-five. And so, um, procedure tells us that, uh, we need to comment it on it at our next local, uh, regularly scheduled meeting. And, uh, we did a satisfactory evaluation for Michael Wilson as our, uh, liquor store manager at that time and date. Okay. So closing comments. Any closing comments? I think everybody pretty much covered it with the, uh, department heads, what's going on this week. So we'll have an executive session coming up.
Maybe one thing.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Public Works is, uh, got cleanup week this week with city of Pipestone and haul it to the Public Works building.
Yeah, funny, Mike didn't mention that, yeah.
And then Mike had one other thing he forgot, uh, final mowing of the cemeteries. So if everybody removed their belongings from old wood lawn and new one, look, new wood lawn cemeteries, um, they're gonna start mowing.
Okay, all right. So you still have time to get the garage cleaned out, the basement cleaned out, bring it up to the city works and they'll take care of that for you. Cleanup fix-up week all, all this week through Thursday, I believe.
Uh, Thursday noon.
Thursday at noon, yeah, okay. So at this point, uh, to entertain a motion to, uh, close our, uh, open meeting and go into executive session.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, we'll be going into closed session for a performance evaluation of, uh, Deb Nelson.